All right, so now we are being recorded. And we will begin this meeting of the Parking Commission of the town of New Canaan. It is now, according to my, I watch at 5:03. We have a quorum with Pam Crum, Laura Budd, Peter Ogilvy, and myself. I see Stacey is attending, and so is Tom Statler.
If you need me, I'm sorry, if you need me, call me on my cell. I'm gonna take off.
Okay, no problem. I am going to share my screen for a moment. There it is, share. Okay. Now that is showing, I think, the wrong thing. Is it showing the agenda now?
Yes.
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 Okay, good. So there's our agenda. And we're having our first Zoom meeting. The deadlines apply. There's some discussion about the appeals. And before we do anything about appeals, I wanted to ask Stacy, were there any tickets that actually got appealed?
Got appealed? I'm not sure what you mean.
Were there any traffic violations that were appealed?
There were four, yes. We had four traffic violations that people appealed. Three of them, if I remember off the top of my head, had to do with just payment of spaces. There was an issue. One of them did have to do with a handicap parking spot.
Okay. All right. And, you know, you and I and Kevin discussed this. And the conclusion was, we had to waive these because this meeting wouldn't qualify as the necessary due process. Maybe we'll come to a different conclusion going forward. But I don't feel too bad about having waived four tickets. And I'll bet even the one in the parking of the handicap spot, there was probably, the whole street was empty. So there's plenty of places for a handicapped to park. That's my guess. Is that fair?
Um, I can't recall the exact date, but it was in and around the time that this whole incident, the whole circumstances was starting. So, yeah, there might have been do enough parking spaces. But I really can't comment on that because I don't have them actually in front of me since we made the agreement and I had sent out letters. So I did not have them in front of me.
Okay. But that's kind of behind us. Let's talk about if the--
Wait a second, Keith. Are you suggesting we waive the handicap violation?
I'm suggesting it has been waived because we provide due process.
But--
I don't understand that.
Yeah.
If, if there are no other people parking on the street and a non-handicapped person parks in a handicapped spot, why should we waive the ticket?
Yeah, I don't think you understand.
No, I don't understand.
Oh, let me explain it. There's a thing in the Constitution about due process, which every person has a right to appeal a ticket, conviction, anything. But this Zoom forum doesn't give us enough standing to provide an appeal. This was the decision by the first selectman. And I--
Keith?
Yeah.
I have an issue for two reasons. One, oh, I'm starting to lose you. For two reasons. One, we are supposed to decide this as a commission, not as individuals outside the commission because we were appointed and we're sworn in as commissioners to do this. And according to the charter, we're supposed to it. I did research the legal requirements under normal circumstances, and these abnormal ones with regards to appeals. What I found is, one, and here's the process. The appellant has a right to hear. It's, I have a hearing if they want. The process is to submit an appeal. The Parking Bureau notifies them. As to the hearing date, the date of the hearing is to be no less than 15 days and not more than 30 days from the date of mailing the notice. There is nothing in the statute that says when the notice has to be mailed, nor does it say when the hearing needs to take place relative to the issuance of the ticket nor receipt of the written appeal. Therefore, the commission could have had, did have the authority to postpone the hearing, have a continuance of the hearing for these appeals. Additionally, according to the Governor's Executive Order, number 7G, Part 2, the commission has permission to meet virtually, and they can continue the appeals for this month and the future date until either the safety concerns are lifted, the commission meets in an open in-person forum, or arrangements are made for a virtual hearing meeting whereby the appellants possibly are notified in advance and can be part of the Zoom hearing.
All this just because you so badly want to enforce tickets and we probably parked on the handicap spot and the whole street was empty?
Keith, I know these are unusual times.
You guys are believable. Okay, but--
These are--
It has been decided by the chief executive of the town of New Canaan--
But that's not the charter.
Well, okay.
It's not the way it is on the charter. And I know these are unusual times. And it doesn't mean that there is a-- It doesn't mean that there's not a legal way. Commission uphold the laws. And people are abusing those laws around town now. They're parking in crosswalks. They're parking in front of hydrants. They're parking in handicap zones, in no parking zones. And we've got to find a way to continually having normalcy somehow and adjudicating it responsibly that we will have, when things get back to normal, that it will, there will be a sense of normalcy in our town. When this, so I think that this was taken upon because you thought it had to be adjudicated or else not, or waived at this time.
Does anybody else want to comment?
Hey, Keith, I'm on, by the way.
Yeah. I guess I would, I would agree with Pam. I mean, it's really not worth spending any more time because it's already been done. But the only comment I would make, Keith, is that handicap spots are in a place that are close to curves and things like that. So it's not worth the time we've spent on it. But, but I would say in the future, you know, someone could certainly hop on and get due process here, so.
And, and I do have to, excuse me, do have to say that it is written someplace that an appeal has to be heard in, within 30, 30 days, in a month's timeframe. I do remember seeing that way back. And so I do think there is a time limitation that they have to be seen and heard, if I'm not mistaken.
It's from the date of mailing the notice of the hearing. It, I read the, I read the statute.
And when does the notice have to go out?
It does, there is no timeframe by when the notice has to go out. It doesn't spell it out.
So you're thinking it could be 10 years later? That can't--
No, it can't be 10 years later. But look, we could, it doesn't have to be within 15 days, 30 days of getting a ticket, according to the statute.
Well, it seems to me you only, you found part of it. There must be some deadline at which you have to send the notice out.
Well, I read the whole, whole thing. And I also--
You read a tiny part of one statute. But I would like to move on.
Hey, Keith, I'm on. I, I've kind of gotten late to this conversation. But is this about avoiding the, the outstanding tickets?
There was one evidently that was for someone who parked in a handicap spot. The other three were just time on the meter. Stacy didn't bring the ticket in, but she tends to think it was one that was after the COVID thing had started. So my supposition would be the street was probably empty and someone just parked in a hurry. And there was plenty of parking for handicapped to park. And they shouldn't have parked in the handicap. I'm not forgiving them. But I don't feel that bad about having waived the ticket. And I still feel that, that, I don't know how, I guess you could invite a, an appellant by a Zoom meeting, but you just didn't invite them. And here we have a meeting. So they can't get through process because they weren't invited.
But that's powerful. It seems to me we've screwed up on this meeting in multiple ways. The first way was waiving the handicap parking ticket. The second way we screwed up was not inviting the public.
Well, the public is invited.
Well, obviously, since it's password protected, they're not.
No, no, that, you didn't, you misunderstood what Tom Statler said. The public can attend, but we did not send a specific invitation to the person who was appealing.
But we should have.
Perhaps we should have, and perhaps--
Particularly, particularly since even if they wanted to get into the meeting, they would need the password.
No, if you get the link, you can just hit the link.
No, I tried that.
Well, it worked fine for me.
That's because you're running the meeting.
No, Laura didn't work--
That's how I did it as well, Peter. I didn't have to put anything in.
Well, it wouldn't let me in.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Sorry, but--
I, I had to key the password in manually.
That's probably a browser issue on your part because I was able just to click right to the link and, and go right through.
Yeah. But, you know, addressing the situation of the future tickets, yes, we will have to get a process where we send them Zoom invitations. We weren't up to speed on that. So this one got waived. So going forward, we'll have to figure out how to do that so we can provide due process and we can do a hearing. But we just, you know, this just came, you know, we weren't ready for it. We missed this one. So unless there's some other comments, I'd like to move on to the submission of the March 4th special meeting minutes.
I'm just gonna ask, how are you going to proceed with determining how to do it?
Well, let's discuss it. I mean, I, I think we just need to have a, send, send them, Stacy, when we--
When I send out the notices, I can send them the link.
Well, do they provide an email address?
Um, no, a lot of them don't. A lot of them don't even provide a home address where I can send them the appeal notice. Sometimes they just send in an appeal with a name.
Yeah, I'm just not certain how soon we'll have the link. I mean, the link for this meeting was sent out, what, about four or five days ago? And normally, that, that's about when they want to send the link out.
You can set it up earlier. I'm on one that we've set up for two months ahead.
Okay, so that's what we'll have to do. We'll have to get Pam Flynn to give us a link and put the link in the, in the letter. And just say, you know, we're not having physical meetings. Here's the link so you can join us via Zoom. And same rules apply. If you're not there, you know, we'll still consider your, your appeal.
Written appeal.
Want to participate, you've got to come in via Zoom.
Yeah, we can add that to the appeal letter so that they could provide, or we can add to the, the, the appeal letter, please provide an email address.
Yeah.
So that we can provide you the link or send me an email or provide my email address so they can send me an email address so we can provide the link as the meeting gets closer.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess we have to assume everybody has an email and has access to computer these days. So assuming that that's true, then that would solve the due process issue.
Or they can have an agent do it for them. Somebody act as an agent.
Right. Or I'm doing it on my phone. I'm sure they have a--
Right. Okay, so that's how we'll handle it. Are we agreed on that? Do we make a motion? We try, try it that way? We all in favor?
Yep.
Keith, could I say something?
Please.
Could you? So I gather, you know, the, the Parking Commission adjudicates whatever comes to them. All right, but right now, the Parking Department, first of all, the commission doesn't manage the Parking Department. The selectmen do. And secondly, if we choose to waive violations in an emergency, we can choose to waive violations. So I don't know what we're talking about. If, if, you know, you know, there's no adjudication going on in any court in Connecticut right now.
Correct.
So, so, and, and there's no enforcement going on right now of parking. So I don't know quite what, what the point you're making here in terms of these particular ones that were waived. I mean--
Keith, what, or Kevin? What we're talking about is, according to the Executive Order, it's been postponed. There's a continuance on, on these.
Yeah.
Anything that is being adjudicated can be postponed.
Right, I know, it could be. But, but we wait, the Department, Parking Department, they first of all can waive these. So they're not before you for adjudication. They haven't been postponed. They, they disappear. Stacy should, should send these people letters saying your, your, your violation was waived.
I did already.
Okay, so, so that's-- I don't know quite what you're talking about with respect to these items. Now, in the future, I mean, I think as long as the emergency is going on, I don't, I don't think you should be trying to invite people into appeal things by, by coming on Zoom calls, Zoom meetings.
Well, hopefully, there won't be any serious violations. Otherwise, you know, because what about if people literally start, you know?
I tell you one thing, police are not out there writing any, any tickets, so.
We are seeing, we are seeing, when you drive around town, you're seeing people parking where they really shouldn't be parking in crosswalks, handicapped, whatever, in front of fire hydrants.
Yeah, but there's--
Those are safety issues.
There's plenty of parking and--
I know, but they're not doing--
There's hardly any foot traffic. You know, it's just a totally, a unique circumstance.
Yeah.
So are we okay with having the advertiser publicize as notes from this meeting that we won't enforce any parking violations? That sounds like open season to me.
We don't, we don't currently have anybody enforcing on the street. The Parking Department, people are not out on the street, nor are, are police writing tickets right now. Now, the question, the question you might discuss, what we might discuss is what's going to happen after May 20th? Are we going to charge parking meter fees? There's a sense that we shouldn't. And, and are, and I, you know, are we going to reinstitute enforcement when, when the lots and the, and the streets become--
Utilized more.
Utilized again.
Well, I think we, I think we have to. It's a public safety issue.
Correct.
And we're soon going to face double parking issues.
I, I think we should handle that on a month-by-month basis. I mean, right now, it's wide open. I mean, I've been, Tucker and I have been parking in front of our office. You know, there's tons of spaces. And I think we should look month over month. When, when things start to jam up, then yes. But at the beginning, you know, when you've got people who have been unemployed to be charging employees for parking when there's empty spaces everywhere at the beginning, I, I can't see that as fair. As things open up and we start to feel tension on the street, then, then yes, when, when, you know, when people are circling, looking for spots. But certainly not right away on May 20th should we start charging for parking, assuming the lots are still empty.
And you might want to utilize us in a way, or we might want to go back out there and slowly just as the public starts parking again. If we do see somebody park illegally, just let them know, you know?
Yeah, actually, actually--
If that's moving far, you have to, we're starting to open up again and, and we need people to start parking legally.
Yeah, and, and the discussion, since we're going to have a very geographically different Elm Street to accommodate the restaurants outdoor dining, we, we were talking about using the Parking Department during the week as ambassadors for parking and to try to maintain as opposed to, you know, at least, at least until things get back to some kind of normalcy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should go out there hot and heavy at the beginning. I think we should slowly just, you kind of get people back used to how parking used to be without--
You know, we never really suspended the meters from, you know, people, the meters are there. Some people have been depositing money, not realizing--
Very few.
But, but, I mean, should we, should we perhaps begin June 1st to begin to, you know, tell people they have to pay at the meters or not? That's, that's the decision, I think. You can talk about and make a recommendation. And, and, you know, I personally don't care too much about revenues in, in the current circumstance. We're trying to help Elm Street get back on its feet.
Yeah, you know, I think we've covered this enough. And I'm wondering if we could, as long as we got you, Kevin, I don't know if you're planning to stay for the whole meeting because I don't know how long the meeting will be. Do you want to talk about the plans for Elm and Forest Street?
Sure, I mean, basically, Tiger is working with John Di Federico and Jen Ellison, the Health Director, to come up with a plan that would basically accommodate Elm Street, Main Street, a few restaurants, Pine Street, Forest Street, not, not really closing any roads, although Forest perhaps could be closed for certain hours, to enable the diners to be out on the sidewalk entirely, eliminate the parallel parking so pedestrians can walk in the parallel, where the parallel parking was and be sufficiently far apart from the diners so that they're not-- Well, so they're socially distanced. And so that plan should be finalized by early next week and, and either approved. It's not, the, the governor's supposed to be issuing written guidance on how to do this outdoor dining. And they, I understand they're going to lift all planning and zoning requirements. They're going to lift the requirements for having an outdoor liquor permit if you have an indoor liquor permit. They're going to lift the requirements that you apply to the state. Main Street is a, is a state road. And ordinarily, you'd have to apply to the state for a permit to do what we're doing with the sidewalks and the, and the parallel parking, so.
So just to make sure I understand now, are we talking about allowing the residents to put tables on sidewalks or on streets or both?
On sidewalks. Forest Street, I'm not sure where they're, where they're coming out. Again, Tiger is working on it with John and, and Jen. And they'll come up with a plan that will satisfy the opportunity since, since the restaurants can only serve outdoors, to give them the opportunity to have outdoor dining and eliminate some parallel parking in order to keep the pedestrians away from the, the diners on the sidewalk.
Yeah, let's play for, let's pray for good and dry weather.
I said, I expect, you know, some restaurants will be putting tents up so that the sun won't be a problem as the, as the good weather comes in June and July and August. We expect this to go all the way through September, October, so.
Okay, all right. So any other comments? Because otherwise, I want to get back to the agenda, which I won't share my screen because you've all seen it. But we do have to go through these things. So I'd like to submit the March 4th special meeting minutes. All in favor of approving those minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Sorry, I'm making notes. Okay. The next item was, and this is a key one for all of us. Given the current circumstances with regard to the COVID crisis that we've just been discussing, the current permit year has been extended for the time period covering the state's stay-at-home order. Where there's reason, permit renewal applications haven't been sent out so far in May, as they have been in the past. Permits, the intention is for the permits to remain in effect until a decision is made and extension date determined. So let's talk about that. How long should we extend the current permit year? And how do we parse the parking, parking permit fees for the reduced permit year that's going to follow? So Kevin, do you want to say anything on this to kick it off?
Well, our discussion has been that rather than giving refunds for March, April, May, and perhaps June, that we, it's easier just to give them a credit--
Yeah.
Going forward from, and make the new permits effective October 1st or November 1st, whatever it takes to, to, to give them back what they lost with parking. And so we haven't made a decision yet. But we figured we, we would wait until we see when commuting resumes and, and then what, what effective date should be for, for the 2021 sticker.
Well, so do we want to just stay kind of open on this? Or, because you were saying this might go through September or October. Do you want to, like--
Well, the, the outdoor, well, first of all, the outdoor dining accommodation could go. But the parking in, in lots is going to depend on whether people go back to work in, in any numbers that would cause them to be parking in. But we, we obviously owe them, I think, in fairness, March, April, May, perhaps June. So we owe them four months of parking they didn't get.
Are you talking all lots or commuter lots or town lots? Or what are you talking?
Well, you know, primarily, primarily commuter lots. But I guess the, the business, business permits in the other lots, yeah, look at it, I think, be fair. We're losing a lot of revenue, but what can you do about it? This is a--
Everyone's been subject to the stay-at-home order, right? So even if you had an office in New Canaan, you still couldn't, you weren't supposed to be going.
Right.
What's the latest word? And this is just a, a question about when New York City is planning to reopen. What's the earliest date they've talked about reopening and allow, allowing businesses? I mean, like office businesses?
Well, the, the governor just said something about a four-step plan, but I didn't pay any attention. I, I do know, I was talking to one Wall Street guy that says we have 300 guys in New York City now. We're going to increase it next week to 600. So there is some kind of, something going on.
I thought I heard their target, New York's target date was May 15th. Now, I don't know if that's still, still ongoing or, or effective. But originally, I heard that it was, they were, May 15th was their target date. Our target date, shall I say.
I think what's going to keep our commuters away is more of the trains, you know, being on the trains and, or the subways. And those who do go back to work will probably drive. That's, that could become a problem.
Let me just say, my daughter works in the city. And they've told her that that, that they're, that company is not planning to resume normal office operations for months.
That's right. My daughter works for Google and Kelsey. She's not going back for six months.
Yeah. So--
You've discovered people can actually work from home and very effectively for a lot of jobs. But the traders at Wall Street, a lot of them never left. They're in, they're in alternative locations and--
Let me ask you, how, Kevin, how generous do you feel, Kevin? I mean, because we could just say, we'll let this go to the end of the year.
Well, again, I, I've been, I've been wanting to just do things in a measured way and see how things develop. I mean, I, I think some people start going back to New York or we're told that they have to be back in New York. And others are going to stay away for, until they feel safe.
Well, because we meet, you know, you know, every two months, can we assume--
Why don't you meet every month? I would encourage you to meet every month.
And you didn't want us to, and you waived the tickets. Anyhow, so if--
You're the only commission that meets every other month.
Our conference meeting would be in July. So may I assume that if we have our meeting in July, that we would not have, you would not have wanted to start enforcing the, let's call it the commuter parking lots, until, say, the end of July? Is that fair to say?
Well, actually, it's a different, a different question as to that. We're going to enforce violators who don't have permits. You know, we, you know, I suppose if people start going back on the train, we will start, you know, looking for violators. But as far as people paying for the 2021 year, we really owe them money back. So we could cut checks, do a reconciliation.
We're all on board with the idea of just extending the current year and prorating in the next period.
Yeah.
What, or as an option, what if you kept the annual but just reduced the annual by amount that you'd want to prorate it?
But we don't know yet what that, we don't know yet what that amount is. Are we, you know, as we, as we proceed? If people start going back en masse in June, then I think we, we can say we're only going to give you March, April, and May.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm thinking. The fact that if you anticipate saying, well, we're going to give you a portion because you are buying an annual permit.
Yeah.
You're saying, we'll give you in consideration of these first few months of how bad it was and so forth, that we will take that off of the fee, the cost of your annual permit.
Well, again, I think, I think we ought to be generous as a community. You know, people are getting checks back from their insurance company, right? Liberty Mutual sent people checks for the, because they, there's a lot of adjustments that have to be made. And people have gotten checks back from their colleges and universities. I mean, people, people expect to be compensated for some of the they didn't get. And I, rather than making it a morass of trying to figure out what[1720.14] And I, rather than making it a morass of trying to figure out what individual people are owed.
I think we're kind of in violent agreement. So would we say, you know, we're gonna extend it and then for the periods, so let's say the remainder ends up being seven months, would we say we charge seven twelfths of the normal annual permit fee? Or do we want to like give them, to me, that's the obvious logical thing to do. Or we could like give them a month. So if it's seven months, we charge them for six months. If it's, ends up being six, we charge them for five. So we give them like a free month as a discount. Other than that, I'd say if they're gonna end up getting seven months out of the, the permit, we charge them seven twelfths of what the fee was going to be.
Right.
By the way, we didn't have an increase anyhow, right?
Right, 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 right. But I, again, I, I guess that's what we're gonna do, but we just don't know yet whether we're gonna give up the month of June too. If, if, if a lot of people start going back in June, it might be fair to say, look, in fact that you are not going back, that's your problem or, or certainly by July 1st. So, so March, and March wasn't a full month, but March, April, May, June, four months.
Four months.
Four months. So, so we'll give them, that we'll charge them for eight months for the new, for the new sticker.
Yeah, I, this is why I thought maybe we'd be generous and give them one free month is because a lot of people, even though say 20% are starting, there's gonna be, this is just gonna be phased in, right? It's not like a hundred percent are gonna be going to work. Some people, as we discussed, won't be for months.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if it were me and I would have to pay for some permit and I knew I wouldn't be using the thing for the next two or three months, I'd be a little aggrieved about that. At least if I got one free month, then I'd say.
Well, and it's also, it's also like the people that commute occasionally, they buy, have to buy an annual. So they buy it, maybe to use it four times, six times a month. They're paying the same price as somebody is using it every day.
I think a lot of people, they recalculate the value of a permit based upon, they, they may say, I'm only gonna start going in Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Yeah.
Three days a week, or I, I know I can pay a boxcar, you know, so.
Or buy a annual daily.
Hi everyone, I apologize, I got caught on a work call.
No, no problem.
Are you back at your offices?
Um, no, I have a, but my company pays for very expensive virtual backgrounds.
Stacy, have you gotten any inquiries? Have you seen come through email about people who are moving to town and are asking about train permits?
Yes. Yeah. Yes, I've, I've got several inquiries. Are you asking me Laura? I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, yes.
I've got several inquiries about people who have moved to town and are looking for train permits. So what I have been telling them exactly what we're discussing, that right now, we're not giving out any permits because nobody's commuting, but once we kind of get an idea of when we're gonna be up in running or some type of normalcy, that I will have it posted of course on our website and they can contact me and then we can get started with the permit. But right now, um, you know, everything is, they're not even commuting, so I'm telling them to purchase a permit right now. They don't, they don't have to, but there's availability in Talmadge Hill. People are putting their name on the waitlist for the other lots, so when I, so I'm getting that too, but yeah.
The other, um, the other, and I apologize for joining late and maybe you've already covered this, but, um, the other sort of tool, right now we just have an annual permit and the daily parking, right? Um, and we do have the, the passes that you can buy, I think in, in groups, I forgot how many you can buy at one time. But there are other towns that have monthly permits, um, that you can buy at a premium. And so the concept would be, you know, just for argument's sake, say you could buy a annual permit for $360, you know, $330 a month, you'd buy a monthly permit at $50 a month. So you'd pay 50% more for the monthly permit, but the idea being that, uh, you know, as Kevin points out, you'd make a calculation at one given point and understand that there's a turning point. Um, but you create that convenience and, and potentially we would capture some of the extra revenue, uh, people wanting to maybe pay more than they would on a daily basis, but just have a convenience of not having to pay them.
Have to pay upfront the whole year.
You know, keep my, we now have the flexibility of the boxcar spaces though, so anybody who really can figure out, you know, they're gonna have a variable schedule.
Right.
Or they want, they want to pay a premium for a month and they're not gonna go every single day during the month, that boxcar is a very viable option, both the St. As and Walgreen spaces and.
You're right. I, I think, I was just thinking of it as another kind of weapon in our arsenal.
Right.
You know, I, I think the boxcar is a fantastic option. Um, I just know personally, having used boxer, there have been a few times where I've forgotten to pay my boxcar and I get the $30 ticket and I, I would have rather paid a $50 monthly ticket, excuse me, monthly permit.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Well, um, we gotta try and move this toward a motion. Do, do we want to just, again?
Is that where the cell tower's going Keith?
Ah, just gonna say the same thing.
He's cell towering this photo.
You stole it right out of my head.
It'd be over there on the, on the left.
You should do that on a Zoom call with your neighbors and kind of pencil it in there Keith.
Problem is you can't see it. They won't. Um, anyhow, I took this photo the other, just like two days ago, because the mowers finally came and mowed my property. So proud to see my, my lawn looks so good and that'll be the fun time in the whole year that it looks this good. So, um, do we want to just say, you know, we'll pro, whenever we decide, you know, whenever we're things reopen, but how do we determine when things have reopened?
Well, again, that's, we'll probably be having this conversation in July. I, I, I don't think things are going back to normal.
Okay.
Right away in June. And I think we need to be fair and I don't want to be a Scrooge. I mean, I, you know, people have been screwed up enough.
So are we going to? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Kevin, is it, uh, go ahead, go ahead.
So are we going to allow, the people that presently have permits, they get to keep them and they're not paying for the extra months that they're keeping them for the meantime, right?
Right.
And so it's just a matter of when we get to a renewal date, we will then make it a different price for the, at the renewal time.
Correct.
Yes.
Probably, probably November 1st rather than October 1st.
Hey, uh, Kevin, do we have, or maybe someone else will know, in terms of a metric to determine when things are starting to pick up again, besides anecdotally and obviously Stacy's team can drive through, but do we have any real time metrics on Metro North ridership? Because that would give us the best indication that things were.
Well, it's a five, it's a 5% now, right? Or, or less, so.
But, but there's no way we could find out in 30 days that it's a 10% and another 30 days is it 20%? I mean, that's, I, it's probably too hard to get that data, I would say.
Well, you can measure by the lumberyard lot. How many, how, how much is filling up?
All right.
It's, but as we, as we restart the economy, most people are gonna drive to New York and Greenwich and Stamford. They're gonna want to avoid the train like crazy.
Right, that's, that's part of our dilemma.
But you're still gonna have to pay $40 to park in the city, so most people will take the train.
I think, yeah, I think you can have a, a bifurcation, right? People who can't afford to park in the city versus those that can. I mean, that's what we've seen across the board, right?
Yeah, I mean, people will just wear a mask, deflect the train, wear a mask, you know? Uh, yeah, but you're right. That's it. I don't think these trains are gonna get the, the capacity, the 90% capacity they were operating at, right? Anytime soon. Um, okay, so if we're not gonna make a conclusion, then let's move on to the next item. Um, which are what allowances should be made for curbside pickups? It's working now as there are plenty of open parking spaces, but once things open up a bit and spaces start to fill up, we may want to allow the opportunity for curbside pickup for people who may be uncomfortable to go into restaurants and stores and things. So Kevin, you wanna?
Well, part of the plan, eliminating the parallel parking would be to make the diagonal parking on Elm, for example, become short-term parking to accommodate the pickup. Um, so rather than letting people park on the few number of diagonal spaces, um, either that or allow people to simply double park, uh, in the, in the, Elm Street will definitely be two lanes still going, but again, I don't know where Tiger and John are gonna come out as far as, um, how to accommodate the, uh, the takeout.
Any comments or anybody else?
But that's all police department jurisdiction anyway. Street parking is.
Right, is police commission.
Police commission.
Well, we, well, we, don't we administrate the ticketing? So I guess my, I mean, it's, it's.
Well, I just want to want, you know, they may very well make it 20 minute parking on the, on the diagonal spaces rather than two hour parking, because once, once things open up and you have the different configuration, people shopping or going to a restaurant to eat, there's plenty of parking except for, uh, handicapped spaces and there's no real need to allow people to take the few spaces that'll be left for two hour parking.
I agree with you. Um, do you think, I mean, I, I, I was just thinking from an enforcement perspective, theory we're supposed to give safety guidance, so maybe having, have we ever had like a joint police commission, parking commission meeting to talk about?
No, no.
No.
One of their meetings, you know, they have open meeting.
Remember, we did that analysis of parking tickets last one, we do it to Stacy, Bob did it. It's amazing how few tickets that the police write.
Yeah, police, police, the, the, the majority of parking tickets are given by us. We have some of the younger guys now starting to enforce parking regulations, uh, but you know, again, it's, it's illegal parking, it's handicapped, it's no parking zones, uh.
If you park on the curb though, they may give you a ticket.
Yeah, things like that.
Or park the wrong direction.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my agenda item because we've seen how important the curbside is. I know the restaurants, even though they're gonna have outside dining, really want to make sure that there's still space available for their curbside. Uh, it's gonna be a tough balance because when the stores open up, we're gonna want to allow people, if someone wants to shop, uh, 20 minutes maybe, you know, um, for some of the older people, but I don't know, that'll all be worked out by people smarter than I. But I think the, the double parking in the curbside, you know, I know that's been a big source of tickets in the past and I think, I don't know, we need to think about some sort of structure for that, so to allow that to, to happen and stuff.
Maybe we can just, we can designate certain spaces, 20 minutes on Elm Street, the diagonal, and then other spaces, keep it at the two hours for shoppers, maybe there could be a certain area.
Yeah, you know, my, my feeling has been, we're leaving this to Tiger and John DeFederico and Jen and I, I'm not gonna get involved with it. I don't usually get involved with it. I mean, they're, they're, they're trying to make it work on, on an emergency basis.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I, I was just gonna say clarify, so they're talking about, I know it's not our decision, but they're talking about actually where the parallel parking spaces are, that that's gonna be combed off basically for walking?
Yes, as walking, pedestrians walking.
And does that give enough room between the parking and the traffic and so forth for people to back out of the crowded spaces without hitting anybody that's walking along the street?
Yeah, to back out from the diagonal, yes, but yeah.
That's gonna be the issue. I think it, you know, Stacy's point about when the, when the parking department gets in action again, that they be kind of ambassadors of parking.
Right. I can't wait to get them back out on the street to do something. But they've been, they've been helping with other things, other departments, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really see them as being part of the, big time part of the solution with all this, um, and their presence and explanation and, you know, um, you know, as through a transitionary period, so I think we'll be great.
It's gonna be all new to everybody, so it's gonna be a, a brand new learning curve, so.
Yeah, so, uh, let's be gentle.
Yep.
So let's move on to our next bullet, which was Pam's, uh, I'm just gonna read it. An explanation regarding the statement in the New Canaanite. New Canaan stands to take in about 675,000 in parking permit revenues during the current fiscal year, according to budget documents dated April the 2nd, 35,000 more than originally forecasted. And Pam, you wanted an explanation?
I just wanted to understand that, because I assumed that we were budgeting according to what our income would be and we especially now don't have income from tickets and so forth. So how does this rationale work? I mean, what's the rationale of this?
Well, originally, we get our majority of permit fees in, in this fiscal year. So it, it was based on what was, what took, we took in last, last year, um, going to no wait at Talmadge Hill and an increase, uh, in, uh, when I figure out the budget, a possible 2% increase in permit fees, because I am doing that before we, we vote on permit fees. So basically, next, next year's permit fees are actually in this fiscal year's budget. So, so when I'm figuring all that, I'm figuring out an increase of more people coming into town, getting permits. It was no wait on Talmadge Hill, it was the increase of 2%. So that's how that was, um.
Okay, so that was the 2%.
Yeah, and then so, and, um, so if we don't take that in that, this year, because we are not doing renewals, that's why we're going to lose it.
Right. So we owe us more than the 35, won't we in essence?
I, I think when I spoke to Loonder, uh, for this 2020 budget year, it was budgeted at 640. When I saw 675, I wasn't sure what, but it was budgeted for 640 this year.
Right.
Um, and we had to take that out of the, the budget because we are not gonna be doing renewals by the end of this fiscal year. So, yeah, but he figured it a little bit less though, uh, Loonda. If I'm correct, Kevin, right? Cause I think he sent you an email.
I, I have to admit, I, I'm not following it, I don't know.
Yeah, I know. It took me a while when I realized how, how it's done, but, but yeah, we're going to be losing the majority of our permit revenue this year, even though it's next year's permits.
Yeah.
We get them in this fiscal year.
How we book, how we booked the renewals over the past few years is kind of weird. We used to book them all in June and now we split it June and July, so it really straddles, straddles the fiscal year.
Unfortunately, because a lot of people are late and that, we've, we've gotten more and more people who have not renewed by June 30th, so a lot of them are coming in, in, in July and then throughout the year that we're selling it, that's where we get some other pickup of fees. So.
Just as, as an aside, does it make sense for us to, you know, if that's a problem for Kevin and, and the board, you know, does it make sense to us to move the renewal date forward to May or to June so that it can fall in a fiscal year? That seems like a.
Well, normally the renewals would have been out already. Um, actually this week we would have gotten it so we can have everybody renewed, uh, by June 30th, so that July 1st, we are now in next year's, um, next year's fiscal year. But again, because we're renewing in May and June for 21's permit, we're getting it in 20 fiscal year, so that's always.
And then next year's budget will be down by four months because we're gonna give them four months' credit.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, but when I do the budget, we're actually gonna be figuring in both 21 and 22's revenue, uh, because we're gonna get 22's moving forward at the end of 21. But it is gonna be less because we are, um, we are taking a few months off.
Right.
So it's, yeah.
All right, so I, I'm gonna move on if that's all right.
Good, okay.
Um, we, we kind of skipped an old matter that was on the agenda, which Chris had brought up, which was an update on things like paving, uh, electric vehicle chargers and parking in lieu of. And, uh, I sent a, uh.
I'm on paper over the track.
An email over to Tiger and came back with a, uh, I forwarded, and I forwarded his response to everybody. He had sent us a memo on the status of the Talmadge Hill canopies, we'll get into that in a second. He said for the Talmadge Hill, uh, parking paving, the area's mill drainage will be installed, lots will be fine graded and repaved depending upon the weather. And it's, we're talking about the lower two lots only. For the, uh, Locust Avenue parking lot, the design work is nearing completion, it's due, we put out the bid shortly and he has an August construction timeframe. Regarding EV chargers, the project is on hold, uh, due to the COVID crisis. And then, uh, again, you all have a memo on the Talmadge Hill train station, bus shelter installation and.
Um.
Always in the background there, do I need?
One. Sorry, little.
Kevin? Okay. Um, well, so what his memo is just saying that the installation of the three bus shelters at Talmadge Hill, um, uh, it's being coordinated with the Connecticut Department of Transportation and the MTA. The manufacturer has taken appropriate online safety training to work in the train platform and work is scheduled to begin at 8:00 AM on Tuesday, May the 12th. Um, so that's pretty good. And they say they're gonna finish it in one day, they'll end by 7:00 PM that day, but we'll see.
That's exciting. On, on the, on the paving, it, it's great and I saw it back and forth on the New Canaanite.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I, everyone's got an opinion. Um, so I mean, I, I was happy to see that, you know, we are, I think, doing a fairly bare minimum idea of just repaving those two lower lots and I, I feel like that's prudent, um, just putting two cents. And if they haven't been touched since the 1970s, um, it doesn't seem like we're being overly indulgent. I guess my only thought was, I know that, um, when I talked to Tiger, he mentioned, you know, right now we only have telephone poles for lighting and he mentioned that he could potentially put conduits into, um, the parking lots to arrange for potentially, you know, um, lighting when we could afford such lighting. And obviously putting conduits in before you pave is, is less expensive. And obviously, putting conduits in before you pave is less expensive than putting them in afterwards, and conduits are not expensive. So I was curious if that was part of the plan, because I know that the lighting there is, are, and I know that the police department was interested in that, so.
I think the only real park problem with lighting is the upper lots, and we can string wires from the telephone poles up there. The lower lots, you know, there was never a plan to make them like the new lot with the, maybe, but... I think the lower, the eastern side lots have adequate lighting out, the lower lots. As you go up, the lighting is not so great. So when we do ultimately get to those, or we can do it now, the string lights from up there rather than bringing it down from the train tracks. There is, there's telephone poles on Talmadge Hill Road.
Well, no, I'm with you, Kevin. I would just run the conduits from Talmadge Hill Road over to the left anyways.
Yeah, but, you know, again, the new lot has lighting, nice lighting.
Right.
We've never scoped out the rest of the lots to have better lighting, which...
I would think this is the time to do that, though, right?
Well, I suppose, yeah, but that makes it a more expensive project.
Yeah.
I just think putting conduits in the ground is...
Yeah, the only trouble is they literally are about to, if they haven't already done it today, they've been doing the road. And I'll talk to Tiger tomorrow, but I think it's kind of late in the game to try to be adding to the project.
So does that incorporate the sidewalks, speaking of...
The sidewalks are still to come, too, because that's being, but the money has not been approved from the allocation of the lots of funds, has not been approved. But they've been engineered, and they're pending approval. But it's going to be months before they're ready to go.
Kevin, what was the source of the funding for this repaving? Was any of this from the state parking fund or any state agency?
No, no, road repaving and parking lot repaving is all the annual road funds that we bond for. But the lots have funds which are specifically dedicated to putting sidewalks there. And as part of the sidewalk project, they can probably improve some of the lighting and have the conduit go up along there. And then, so it's probably not, I'll talk to Tiger in the morning. I just, you know, again, Tiger sort of at the last minute said, we're doing the paving on Talmadge Hill, let's do the parking lot, and there wasn't a discussion about lighting until I raised it.
Okay. Appreciate if you follow up on that.
Yeah, we could improve the lighting for those lower lots just by having additional lights from the, from one side that wouldn't be difficult to do. But it wasn't ever scoped out as a renovation of the parking lots, just a repaving.
Yeah, I will mention that in Tiger Mann's memo regarding the Talmadge Hill, you know, canopies, he has a statement, "An electrician, Jerry in Electric, will perform the required grounding work at each of the three shelters. Their work will occur concurrently to the shelter installation." And I did want to ask.
That's just so if they get hit by lightning, they're grounded.
Okay, it's not, yeah. But I hope that there's some lights in those canopies, but maybe not.
There's no lights in the canopies.
Okay, I guess not. All right.
And the question, too, is once we do these three, you know, is there room for one or two more? Because I advocated, and they said, well, let's see how the additional three look, and then...
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually think the five altogether, or the six altogether are adequate, so.
I think for what it's worth, the other, you know, what do you call it, cook in the kitchen down there? I knew that the New Canaan Beautification League was supposed to have a project down there this spring. I saw in their letter, so I don't know how that works into any of this, but...
The flower pots, there are pots along the platform.
No, no, those have been there for a while. It was more something else. I think they were looking at...
Probably postponed, by the way.
No, actually, the Beautification League is out there doing their stuff. They're out. They love to get out there.
All right, well, we have covered everything, every item on the agenda, but one, which was input from the parking department, a description of the activities of the parking department staff during the lockdown. Stacy, you want to tell us what you guys have been doing?
Sure, and I have two additional things after that, real quick. First of all, first, we've been helping out with packing food and delivering it to residents that have requested from Human Services food. So we've been out there a couple of times doing the deliveries and the packing. At the beginning, we were reaching out to the seniors. Lapham needed some help with phone calls to the seniors, making sure everybody is well. So we've been helping, we helped out with that. And basically, I have offered our assistance to anything else that would come up. I know Bob is working on a project. He might need our help with some input into an Excel spreadsheet. He's working on another way of doing it, but if that doesn't work out, we're going to help him with that. And basically, now going to start getting ready to come back, so.
And you're still one man down?
And we're still one man down, yes, yes.
So you saved some money there, Kevin.
Yep.
He's out on workman's comp, so.
There's always a silver lining.
Yeah, we're not saving a lot of money.
Two other things that I just want to quickly, or one thing to share and one thing put out there for you guys to think about. First thing to share is that once we have a date on when we should get out the permit renewals, I'm sorry, once we have a date when we have to get out the permit renewals, I've reached out to our permit vendor. They have the option to do it online as well as mail in a check, but there is a convenience fee online. So I reached out to the permit vendor to see maybe they can help us out this year with reducing that convenience fee, or maybe making a flat rate fee so that more people will be apt to do it online instead of the 3.5% of the cost of the permit. So I haven't heard back, but I just reached out to them on Monday. So hopefully, maybe they'll work with us to bring that price down a little, and we can have some people, more people do it online instead of coming into the office and dropping off their checks and things like that. So that was one of the things that I'm looking into. The next thing, as far as payments in the parking lots. I know we haven't set a date when we should resume people paying for parking. But one of the things that I thought of the other day is, I know Kevin is looking to put timed parking in the lots. That's why we're going with the parking study. However, the parking study, due to circumstances, is being put on hold. So my thought was that keeping with digital payments, possibly reconsidering implementing pay-by-phone into the short-term parking lots so that people do not have to go up to the machines once we reinstitute paying for parking until we decide on how we want to move forward. Just a thought about possibly, you know, doing the pay-by-phone in the short-term lots, again, moving forward, so that people don't have to touch the machines and pay that way when they go into the parking lots. And I know more and more towns are utilizing some type of digital payment in their parking lots.
Stacy, I think we're all in favor of any way we can modernize and take advantage of apps and all the new technology. I don't, you know, so if we can do it, let's do it.
Okay, that's perfect. I know we had put it on hold because I don't know if Kevin's still there, but I know instead of implementing, he was looking to go to a timed parking in the lots. So instead of implementing this, we had put that on hold, kind of, until we found out what the parking utilization study would bring and what the decision was, would be. But, you know, my feeling is, is that it's going to take a long time to actually rebuild parking in town. So the whole utilization study might not be effective until we actually kind of go through a few months. So...
It could be a year before we do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Could be.
So keeping with the whole theme of not having people touch things and, you know, cleanliness, it was just a thought to put out there to maybe see if we want to go in that direction again.
Do we have the technology and the iron mics?
Yes. I reached out to the vendor, who currently works with us for the train station lots. According to him, they would waive any kind of setup fees. They can implement this probably within 30 days. It's not like an overnight kind of thing, but it could be implemented probably within 30 days. The convenience fee would be 30 cents instead of 35 cents like the train stations. Initial contract is for three years, but if we needed to cancel the contract before those three years because we went to another, we went to the timed parking, there is no cancellation fee. So, you know, it sounds like it could be a win-win for everybody.
The 30...
That's the negative.
Excuse me?
What's the negative here? What's the downside?
Well, I was going to raise a question, which may illustrate it. If there's a 30-cent convenience fee, are we talking about, we're talking about the commercial lots now, right?
Correct, the short-term lots, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, that was the issue, as I recall, that, let's say you're going to park for an hour, and you know...
Oh, it's $1.30 instead of a dollar?
Yeah, but some people, they're going to say, yeah, it's $1.30 instead of a dollar.
But I don't have to touch the iron mic.
Right.
And I don't have to try and figure out what's on the screen of the iron mic.
Yeah, but you got to figure out what's on your app, on your phone.
Now, I knew, I know he sent me an article that New York is doing it. They don't have pay-by-phone, they have Park Mobile. I believe their fee is less, but again, the volume that they do compared to what we do is what the fee is based on.
Listen, I think where we were coming out on this when we had this project is, if this is just an additional convenience that we're offering, that no one has to do, you know, where they can still go up to the meter machine and avoid the 30 cents, then why not offer it?
Okay, like I said, the reason it was on hold is because of the parking study and possibly going to timed parking, so why implement it? And then another thought was the fact of commuters parking there. But with all the other options that commuters have to park in the short-term lots would cost them more on a daily basis, and I don't think we would have that. That fear is not there any longer, let's put it that way, of commuters overwhelming the lot.
Let's see how that plays out. I mean, let's try it. But if we find out that some commuters are saying, hey, I'll pay $10 for 10 hours of parking, and, you know, that's not so terrible, and that's my idea. Go ahead, Pam.
It'll actually be $13.
Could we actually set it up that you can only renew once? That you sign up for, you know, like if it's a two-hour timeframe, two hours, they can only do two hours more, in which case, then you eliminate the commuters?
That would require then changing over the whole system to pay by plate. And if you do pay by plate, I think there is a way you can cut it off. But that would require reprogramming, reprogramming, reprogramming things to pay by plate. So it is a little bit more involved. I kind of just thought of this as really something that we can implement rather quickly, give the option so people are not touching the machines. And again, we're not sure that we're not even doing away with all kinds of parking, paying for parking in the parking lots in the long term anyway, so.
Well, I'm a fan. Any, anyone, well, all in favor of Stacy pursuing this?
I'm in favor. I guess the only comment I would make is that, given the volume, is there any, and I'm not saying it's an "and," can we just pursue the vendor to see if they could get us a more, you know, pro-rata rate for a lower dollar amount instead of doing a fixed 30-cent fee? Do something like...
Well, initially, when I looked into this, and when we had talked about it a while back, we were discussing it, I did go to the vendor, and I did give him our lots, our spaces. I gave him the utilization there, how much we were taking in in those lots. He asked me to provide a time period. That's where he came up with the 30 cents. So I can go back to him and see if maybe he can do a little bit better now that we are more on board with it. You know, I can always ask. Doesn't hurt. They can always say that we do.
Would these affect, would the employees that park in the six-hour spots, would they be able to pay by phone as well?
Yes, they would, yes.
In the Park Street lot, I mean, in the Playhouse lot?
Yes, yep.
Okay, okay.
It would affect, it would be good for everybody. It's going to be a pay-by-space, just like the train station. So if somebody, now, if somebody's in those six-hour spaces and they want to stay in those six-hour spaces, they're going to pay for, you know, another six hours, another $3. You know, some people move out of those spaces because they only need an hour more of parking.
Right.
But, so if they didn't want to run out, they would have to pay the three hours, the $3, I'm sorry.
Well, it sounds like a worthy, you know, thing to work on.
Checking. So is the motion, Keith, is the motion to, her, investigate it? Not for us to go ahead with it, but just to investigate it at this point?
No, I would say go ahead and implement.
Okay.
I agree. I think we should move ahead on that.
Because we can always change it, but, you know, we got to, the way we learn is by implementing things, see if it works, and maybe then fine tune it later on. But, you know, otherwise, things are just getting too slow if we don't try to just give Stacy the authorization to implement. So let me make it clear. I make a motion...
Okay, yeah.
Keith, the recommendation should recommend to the selectmen, right? So.
Okay, here's a motion to recommend to the selectmen that Stacy implement the pay-by-phone app. All in favor?
In the short-term lots.
Yes, all in favor. All right, okay, carry. All right, well, this was a...
Keith, can I?
Go ahead.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
On the permits, I was thinking, is there any way we could have gone ahead, even at this point, to try to keep somewhat on our cycle as far as signing people up annually and deferring the payment? Like the town has been doing with the, they're doing that with the taxes, and they're doing that with rents on some of the town buildings. Then at least it keeps you where, number one, you know who possibly would want to return, and it gives you then a possible chance to turn over for the people moving up and into town that they can get a parking spot sooner.
You kind of lost me, Pam.
Well, the town is...
Lots or...
I can't, well, maybe this might, so, I cannot process permits if I'm understanding what you want us to do, process a permit for next year. I cannot process a permit without a payment. It would throw off, because if we deferred the payment, then I would have to reprocess them again and actually put a payment in. I would have to, I would have to process them now as zero payments. So it would...
Correct.
Yeah.
But then, once I receive a payment, I would have to reprocess it as a payment. I mean, so we'd be doing it twice.
Okay, because I was thinking, number one, you could then get, have an idea of who wants to continue with their permit. And then it allows you to bring, possibly offer to new people slots that are going to be available. But also, it's a kind of thing, since we don't know how much the payment is going to be, whether it's going to be the full amount, it's going to be two-thirds of the amount, whatever. You know, the payment is deferred, more, anything, it's a commitment to having the permit, to take the permit, and it keeps you more on track with your normal time cycle.
I'm sorry, I just don't think that's workable. What makes the extension work is people, they pay for the permit, it's being extended, they don't have to take action, they also don't have to try and make a decision. they don't have to take action, they also don't have to try and make a decision about, do they even renew this thing, or what's the world going to be like? No one wants to make a decision now until things become more clear.
I'm just-
I don't think we have any choice but to just do the extension. I think the real question is, how long does the extension go? How much more of a free pass do we give at the end during this phase-in period?
Well, that's why I was thinking, if you got a commitment from people that, without money, that they want to keep it, then-
My point is, they won't commit. No one wants to commit anything now, they want to wait-
There's so many people out of work, and so many, so many workplaces are gonna change. I, I think we have to give people another couple months to decide if they want it. I think the vast majority will want it and go back, but, but I think there's so many things that people just don't know yet, and people can't make, it's just cleaner, I think, if we just move the can down the road and give them, give them, you know, a pro-rated for next year.
I was just throwing that out as a thought, as far as trying to keep a little bit on track and being able to bring people in if we know for sure we would have space.
Thank you, Pam, but I think, I think we've dealt with that now. This was a special meeting because we changed the time of day, and not because we changed the Zoom format, but because we changed the time of day. So we only can cover those things that were on the agenda, which we have now done. So I'm gonna move that we adjourn unless someone has something they want to raise. Anyone, Kevin, anyone else?
Hi.
Okay.
See y'all.
Okay, do I have a move to second, the motion to adjourn the meeting? I see a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll get to that shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye.